Good evening, everyone. I'll call the City Council to order at 8:00 on Monday, May 24th, 2021. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For this council meeting, and hopefully not too many more, we'll be implementing the Governor's Executive Order regarding relief for the open meeting law. This allows councilors to participate remotely. All the votes will be via roll call. And there are five public hearings, and I will go over the process for participating before Agenda Item Number Three. There are 24 items on this evening's agenda, and I will ask the clerk to call the roll to confirm attendance, please.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner is present.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset is present.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas is present.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera is present.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish is present.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin is present.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers is present.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem is present.
Counselor Osing.
Counselor Osing is present.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman is present.
Counselor Robey.
Counselor Robey is present.
Present, sir.
Eleven, all councilors are present. I will now ask the clerk to call or to read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes of the City Council Meeting, May 10, 2021.
Mr. President. Counselor Tenera.
Accept the place on file, please.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Robey.
Counselor Robey votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Osing.
Counselor Osing votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Eleven, yes. The motion to accept and place on file the minutes is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Number Two.
City Council President Osing, having Mayor Vigent provide an update to the City Council regarding COVID-19.
Mr. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, members, thank you very much for allowing me to come down again tonight. We have a lot of different things. I do want to touch on COVID for just a minute before I get into some of the city activities that you were asking for, but first of all, we're working with the Health Department and the Legal Department, and believe we'll be sending out an announcement tomorrow to all boards and commissions. We'll be coming back to City Hall to have all their meetings as of June 1st. What the council does is up to the President and the members, but all other boards and commissions will be back in the building for any future meetings. Teams will be suspended for the time being, and we will be reassessing on how we can do a better job with that moving forward. But at least initially for June, we have no intention on doing the teams' meetings, and the boards will be required to come back. We finally, last Tuesday, May 18th, received the great news that the city was approved for a vaccination site, so we're really excited about that. They finally found the color that wasn't being used, and they assigned it to us. So, we said, "Thank you very much," but we're working with the Marlboro Hospital right now and the Edward Kennedy Health Center, and we'll be calling the state back if we do need some additional vaccines. But for right now, we're running, they're doing a great job up at the Marriott. Last week, we did over 2,400 tests, I'm sorry, vaccines, out of the Marriott, and 1,177 of them were from Marlboro. So, they knocked out over 1,100 from Marlboro residents. The city, right now, the state, based on the state's website, they're still using the 43,615-person population, has 60% of our residents fully vaccinated and 16% partially vaccinated, and that's as of May 20th. I believe that is low, because even at the Marriott, they will take people in a walk-in with no ID and with no insurance, or how would the state even know that they were a Marlboro resident? So, we think that number's low, but we're definitely getting in the right direction. The other good news is, as of the 24th today, 23% of our high school students are fully vaccinated, and 20% of our high school students are partially vaccinated, and 24% of our middle school students are partially vaccinated. And we do have a vaccination clinic at both of those schools on Wednesday, the 26th. So, I want to thank Marlboro Hospital again for stepping up to the plate. They'll be going to both the high school and the middle school. As of this morning, we had 166 students signed up. So, my guess is, there's going to be a lot more than that between now and Wednesday. They do have to sign up in advance, because those are, they're taking the vaccines on the road, so they don't have their setup. They're really doing it as a favor, and can't thank them enough for all they've been doing for us at the Marlboro Hospital. Now on to really good things. Marlboro High graduation is June 5th. We'll be doing three groups of 90 students, starting in the morning, so we're going to have everyone spaced out properly, assigned seating up in the stands, and we think we can really pull this off this year with three different groups instead of, I think last year was 21 or 22 different groups, but, so this year, we're going to knock it down to three groups of 90. They'll be having their senior week activities that week, so it's great that the kids are going to have some additional activities in addition to just graduation. And I encourage all of you and all our residents to get up to the Walker Building, take a look at the portraits of our seniors. It's just a little bit something extra that we wanted to do as we did last year, and getting the pictures up there for all our graduates. Get up there with your graduate and get a picture, so. And the schools are working on their summer food program. They're going to continue that this year, as they did last year. They did a tremendous job with the bus company, and our cafeteria workers just knocked it out of the park, working all summer to provide meals for all our residents. They'll be, they're working out a system where they'll be providing breakfast and lunches for the summer, so we're really excited to keep that going. And one sad note, we're not going to have the farmer's market this year. It was really, really, really difficult to try to find farmers. We found a few people doing crafts, but you really need to have a farmer's market, you really need a farm. So, we're hoping that we can get that back next year, but it's not going to work out this year. The Recreation Department and Chuck told me that all our youth and adult programs are a go this year. So, moving forward, all of them, and our summer concerts are starting on June 17th, so just a few weeks away from starting our summer concerts over at the park. Senior Center is open for business, and today, the library opened for appointment only, but we're going to be expanding on that in the near future, but at least they were open up at the Walker Building. So, a lot of good things tonight. Everything's going in the positive direction, and with that, Mr. President, open it up for any questions you or the council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Questions for the mayor?
Mr. President.
Counselor Landers.
Mr. Mayor, will the middle school and high school students, will they have an opportunity to get their second shot before school is out?
Yes, because we'll obviously piggyback, we'll give them an appointment right away out at a certain date, and we'll be going back up there to give them their second vaccine. The other little glitch with the middle school and the high school was, if you're not 18, we need that signature from your parents, that permission slip to give them the vaccine. So, just a little more work in doing that, but yes, we'll be following up right away with the second vaccine.
Very, very good. Thank you. Counselor Orem.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of questions for the mayor, if I may?
Absolutely.
And the first question would be, the one-shot vaccine, Johnson &amp; Johnson, is that also being offered to our students with the nearing of the school year ending?
No, that wasn't available for the students. I asked that today. I thought originally we were using that to do it with one dose, but no, we'll be doing the, I believe they're using Moderna, but I'm not even positive which one they're using.
And thank you for that, and thank you for your updates. I have personal friends who are very interested in when that band schedule starts, the summer concerts, so thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Counselor Orem. Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Through you to the President. I know back a couple of months ago, there was shortages of vaccines. We consider to have a surplus right now? A surplus of vaccines?
I don't know if we have a surplus, but there's been plenty to go around. I mean, they've told the hospital that they'll keep providing whatever we need. So, last week, we had, I think it was two different days, we were over 500 for the day. So, we're going in the right direction, like I said. Thanks to the Edward M. Kennedy Health Center, getting the federal allotment has been tremendous, so it's been great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Dusset. Counselor Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good to see you, Mayor Vigent. I have a couple of questions, the first being, if students are still participating remotely for school, will they still be able to access those vaccines at the high school and middle school?
I believe so. I don't see any reason they wouldn't be.
So, they can sign up on the portal?
They're still our students, absolutely.
Okay, that's good to hear. And I also wanted to know if that information is updated on the COVID portal on the website with all of these things that are opening for the summer?
None of, most of this hasn't been announced yet.
Okay, great. And then also, I wanted to know, I know you mentioned the boards and commissions are going to be going back in person, starting in June. Does that also apply to the petitioners or people who are coming before the boards and commissions? Are they expected to come in person as well?
Yes, they will.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. President. No further questions.
Thank you, Counselor Pearlman. Counselor Navin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the mayor. Mayor Vigent, thanks a lot for the information, some great news on the vaccine rates. One question, just to follow up on the teams, the Microsoft Teams. So, boards and commissions are coming back, petitioners are going to be required, and it's going to be suspended. Is there going to be some thought going forward to like how, you know, one of the best things about COVID was that people are able to access these or to at least see some of the commissions and things like that? Will teams come back in some form to help people be able to kind of participate, even if they can't voice something in the meeting, but they can see it?
Anything that's been posted so far, advertised through Teams, will be through Teams. Anything that has not to this point, it will be suspended through June, and we'll be reassessing how we can do a better job. IT cannot be continuing to go to all these meetings at night. So, we're working on the logistics of making it work, because I do want the public to have access to all the meetings. We do want our boards and commissions back in the building, but we're working that out, and we figure by the end of June, we should have some clear answers on that.
Great, that's great. Thank you. Couple more, if I may. Mr. President, you had talked a lot about recreational opportunities opening back up. I know Memorial Beach was pretty crowded this weekend, drove through the neighborhoods, and I'm sure our neighbors realize that it's, the season is upon us. Can you provide a short update on what, kind of what the plan is for Memorial Beach going forward? Will we be limiting capacity, kind of the steps that the city will be taking to help make sure that the neighborhoods are protected and people still can access the beach?
Yeah, when I got the call on Friday, it was really about the bathroom facilities, can we open those up for the weekend? And I said, "Absolutely." You know, the weather was, what are we going to have for weather? It was up and down, going to be cloudy, maybe a rain now and then, so we, I didn't expect it to be as crazy as it was. It was a hectic weekend down there, no question. At least we had the bathroom facilities, but we're going to, we're going to attack it this week like we had last year, get the neighborhoods posted and get the police down there to keep the cars out of the neighborhood, be limited to residents only. And the other thing we got to take a look at is the buoys. They don't usually go out until the beach is open. We're really just unlocking the gates at this time and leaving the bathrooms open. There are no lifeguards on duty. There are no lifeguards on duty. So, it's really just allowing people to use their beach at their own leisure, at their own risk, but we also want to make the neighborhoods safe from all the headaches. So, we're working on that for this weekend, but the weather kind of took us, took me a little bit by surprise. The only thing we talked about was the bathrooms and not the rest of it, so.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate your work on that and your help for the neighbors. And then the last piece is, and we talked a little bit at the last meeting about getting an update for the Labor Day parade with the Veterans Council meeting last weekend, and we had mentioned that we were looking to see what kind of capacity issues. Their first question was, you know, skipping over Labor Day, you know, by Veterans Day, is that something that's going to, you know, be around? So, you know, are we getting more information from the state about parades and how we'll be able to move forward with those?
Yeah, again, like I think I said at the last meeting, someone asked a question what 50% capacity of the parade was, and we've had a lot of college students working on that to figure that out, but I don't think it's something we're going to have to worry about. My feeling is Memorial Day is going to be tamped down a little bit for next week. Obviously, we're going to have our regular, our recognition on Memorial Day out in front of City Hall at 11:00, and the veterans will be participating with us, and we're really excited about that. And then moving forward, as far as Labor Day and Veterans Day, I don't see why it will be changed from what we've done in past years.
That's great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Navin. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the mayor. Following up on Memorial Beach, I've read some communities are having a hard time finding lifeguards. Is that going to be a problem for Marlboro?
I signed three applications today, so he hasn't informed me that he's having issues. Obviously, lifeguards are a premium, but the majority of the ones we've had come back, so we're pretty fortunate about that, but, you know, we're definitely going to keep an eye on that, because we don't want to lose them to other communities either. But, no, we're staying on top of it, and we anticipate that we'll have enough lifeguards.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions for the mayor? Any questions for the mayor? Hearing none. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for the update.
Thank you, all.
Let's see. Agenda Item Number Three.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the petition for Massachusetts Electric to install 280 feet of four-to-five-inch conduit from manhole number 10 to pole number 93 on Donald Lynch Boulevard near Bigelow Street, Order Number 21-100, 8292.
Okay, before we get started, since we have five public hearings, I'll go over the rules for participating. So, please keep your computer and phones muted when not speaking, unmute to speak, and then mute when you're finished speaking. And if you're calling in by phone, you unmute by pressing star six. So, again, star six will unmute your phone. Just like the public was here in the chambers, please be respectful while waiting for your turn to speak. The system does not work when everyone tries to speak at once. We will do our best to give each individual an opportunity to speak, so please be patient. Do not watch the meeting on TV. There is a delay. Your remote access is real-time. Should there be a technical issue, we will recess and determine if it can be corrected. Then at the conclusion of the five public meetings, we'll recess for a moment to clear the system if required, and then we'll proceed with the remainder of the council agenda. So, on this public hearing, we will conduct a public hearing in four stages. Public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and then questions from the council. So, again, this is for Mass Electric for installing 280 feet of conduit on Donald Lynch Boulevard. Is there anyone speaking in favor of the special permit?
Yes, this is Al Galvin, design engineer at National Grid Electric, and I'm joined also by the design engineer of this particular job, Josh Pateko.
Good evening, Al. Anything you want to tell us about the project?
Yes, this portion of the North Marlboro substation, it's an expansion project for the feeder out there to alleviate load issues on the feeder. So, they are trenching in the roadway for this stretch of 280 feet, and it's a small portion of this larger project. It's basically the chest of it.
Okay, thank you, Al. Anyone else speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? And again, star six to unmute your phone. Any members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing. Questions from the public. Are there any questions from the public? And again, star six to unmute your phone. Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Are there any public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? And again, it's star six to unmute your phone. Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors. Any questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and it is in public service. Agenda Item Number Four.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the proposed rezoning of land at 290 Hudson Street, identified as Map 43, parcel 38, from Limited Industrial to Residence A3, Order Number 21-100, 8266.
Again, as in the previous public hearing, it will be taken up in four stages. Public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and questions from the city council. And I'll let the clerk get the presentation up. So, we'll start with members of the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the city council. My name is John Irish. I reside at 367 West Hill Road. This evening, I'm proposing a rezoning of land at 290 Hudson Street, Map 43, parcel 38, from LI Limited Industrial to Residential A3. A little history on the parcel. In 1969, the city of Marlboro changed the zoning to LI for some reason, did not include this particular parcel. Prior to 1969, this parcel was in fact in residence zone, which would be similar to an A2 or an A3 zone today. Moving the zoning line to reflect the, to reflect the only single-family property in that district, if you look at the GIS map, that is the last parcel right there, would significantly improve the situation for the owners of 290 Hudson Street. Currently, any home improvement that the, that requires a building permit, the owners would have to go before the ZBA to get relief. Moving the zoning line would ensure that any future improvements on the property would be properly, properly zoned and add new growth for the city of Marlboro. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Irish. Are there any other members of the public speaking in favor of the zoning change? Any members of the public speaking in favor? And again, it's star six. Yes?
Yes, this is Thomas McGinnley, actually the owner of 290 Hudson Street, and I am in favor.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnley. Any other? Any other members of the public speaking in favor?
Hi, this is Sheila McDonald, also resident of 290 Hudson Street, speaking in favor.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. You'll be recorded in favor.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any members of the public speaking in favor? And again, star six to unmute your phone. Any members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, we'll close that part of the public hearing. Questions from the public. Are there any questions from the public? Again, star six to unmute your phone. Questions from the public. Any questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll close that part of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition. Are there any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? And again, star six to unmute your phone. Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, we'll close that part of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors. Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Mr. President. I just have one question, more curiosity. There's no changes in the tax bill with the changing from the different zones, right?
No.
I just wanted to make sure that that was, so, no, because I know industry gets, businesses get taxed at a different, I always wanted it to get down to the zone.
This is a residential property, just happens not to be in a residential zone. It's still taxed at a residential rate.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that was the case. Thank you.
That's okay. Any other questions from the councils? Counselor Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a quick question regarding, do you know when the house was established, and was that before or after? I know you mentioned the 1960s was when the zoning change had happened, and was just curious the order of events here.
Thank you, Counselor Pearlman. I believe the home was struck, was constructed in 1967, and at that time, it was whatever the zoning was, it might have been Residence I, I think it was originally in the 60s, and then in 1969, the city decided to rezone it to LI.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Counselor Pearlman. Any other questions from the councilors? Any other questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and it is in Urban Affairs. Agenda Item Number Five.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2022 budget in the amount of $173,983,364, which represents a level-funded budget compared to the fiscal year 2021 appropriation, as presented by Mayor Vigent, Order Number 21-100, 8291.
Again, this public hearing will be taken in four stages. Public speaking in favor, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and then questions from the city councilors. So, are there any members of the public speaking in favor of the fiscal year 22 budget? Star six to unmute your phone. Any members of the public speaking in favor? Are there any members of the public speaking in favor? Any members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I will close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public. Are there any questions from the public? Questions from the public? And again, it's star six to unmute your phone. Questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public. Public speaking in opposition. Are there any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? And again, star six to unmute your phone. Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors. Any questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing. Agenda Item Number Six.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650 to add a new Section 61 temporary moratorium for multifamily housing projects for 90 days, Order Number 21-100, 8274.
Again, this public hearing will be taken up in the four stages. Public speaking in favor, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and questions from the city council. We'll start with members of the public speaking in favor. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, members, thank you very much for this opportunity to come before you tonight, and there's really no mystery is to the order. There's nothing, there's nothing hidden, there's no hidden agenda or anything. We're fortunate in the city of Marlboro that we have a large number of housing projects that have come before us in the last few years. This council's done a great job in getting them approved. We have almost 1,000 units that have been permitted at this point. We have over 630 of them that are in the process of construction. We have three others, 300 others that, a couple that are coming before you for tweaking and maybe adding some units to that. So, when I proposed this back in April, it was really to give us a little breathing room. In addition to those projects that you all have kind of looked at, the campus is doing a re- doing a rezoning, and hopefully that is successful. They're looking at an additional hundred and, hundred and twenty, some, some number of units like that. I think it's a great spot for a few units, and that's considered a few these days. And in addition to that one, there's five other complexes, five, that have made inquiries at my office about additional housing projects. And none of them are to the stage where they're going to be presenting to you in the next couple of weeks, although I'm hoping to come down within the next thirty days with one of them that I think you will be excited about. But some of the others that are hanging out there, they're in different stages as to what they were going to ask for, how many they're going to ask for, is it going to be condos or apartments over fifty-five or market housing or affordable housing? They're all over the place. So really, one of the issues that has come up, and I've had meetings with the president and the DPW commissioner and our people down there about some of the water and sewer concerns that we have in the city, something we haven't talked about for quite a few years in Marlborough. But with these complexes coming in and the change in some of the industry that's been making phone calls and the manufacturing of some of these medical device, medical type companies or bio companies, they're using more water. As we've been told, we, we can get basically all the water we need from Boston. They've done a great job, the MWRA is doing a great job in get us, getting us the water, but the discharge and the sewer concerns we have, we do have. And that's why there was a, we're looking at a proposal to add a fee for all projects when they're coming in, that we're going to set up a revolving fund for INI. So all this leaching that's going into our sewer pipes right now, we can get back to working on that, and we'll use this revolving fund to pay for that. So we, will be a substantial cost to some of these. This will also give us a little bit of time to get that in place. Again, I know the state's going through a lot as far as their housing goes. The governor's proposed a bill and worked on it for a number of years, and this kind of looks like it's kind of the opposite of what he's trying to do, but we just want to make sure the units that we're approving, and we have plenty of them we can approve, are working for the city of Marlborough, for the best interest of the city of Marlborough. We're, we're doing our part for the state. We're doing more than our part for the state, and if everyone did the same amount, there'd be plenty of housing. But I want to make sure that when the projects are coming to the city council, I can say that I'm supporting it and ask for your support of them, and we can pick and choose the best projects that work for our residents. So this gives us a little bit of breathing room. We're already thirty days into my request, the posting, the advertising went in just a couple of days later that kind of froze things at that point, but I put it in your hands to make a decision with Urban Affairs. I'm sure that the chair probably will, will be waiting for the planning board to come back after their public hearing and their decision, which isn't until June seventh. So I'm not looking to, you know, rush this through tonight, but when those, when everything is put before you, we can take a look at it, and hopefully you agree that we just need a little bit of breather to kind of sort a couple of these things out and then continue moving forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone else speaking in favor? Again, star six to unmute your phone. Anyone speaking in favor? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Are there any questions from the public? Again, star six to unmute your phone. Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Are there any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Again, star six to unmute your phone. Public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Councilor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. To the mayor through you, what is the actual date that the ninety days is over?
Excuse me, Council, what was that?
What's the date that the ninety days is over?
Well, the posting went in two or three days, probably around the twenty-ninth or the thirtieth of April.
Okay.
So again.
July twenty-ninth, thirtieth.
Approximately the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth of July.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
That's correct, right?
Sounds about right.
And there are, you know, the houses, good deal of states and a couple other complexes, they're pulling permits for single-family houses. That's fantastic. We want to encourage those single-family houses, but when the apartments go up, they use a lot of water, generate a lot of sewer, and, you know, depending on which projects, they, there are some that add a lot of value to the city and others not so much. So again, we just need to take the best ones.
Thank you, Councilor Dusset. Any other questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Hearing none, we'll close that part of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this is in Urban Affairs. Agenda item number seven.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application for modification of a special permit from Minor Property Group LLC to condition number twenty to allow for increased signage at four oh eight Maple Street, order number seventeen twenty-one dash one hundred six-eight-zero-zeroI.
Again, this public hearing will be taken in four stages: public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and questions from the city councilors. With that, is there any member, applicant on, on the phone?
I'm here.
Pat, thank you for holding in. If you could state your name and address, I appreciate it.
Pat Scuzzelli, seventy-eight Maple Avenue, Leominster, Mass., appearing from Minor Property Group, four hundred Maple Street, Marlborough, Mass.
Thank you, Mrs. Scuzzelli. You wanted to explain to the councils what your intentions are.
Thank you for this opportunity. This property at four oh eight Maple Street is in a commercial automotive zone, and in January of twenty eighteen, it received a special permit because this property is on less than an acre, according to your zoning ordinances. When it was built, it was designed and implemented from the old three-eighty-six. It's always been a service station, so it's now Automax Service Center. In the last year, we've been approached by Minor Key as a key location. Part of that was brought on by the improvements on Route eighty-five. Also, there's not like another Minor Key within fifty miles, so they felt that this was a key location. It's also interesting that it's right next to Ojiffy Loop. So we are here tonight, I'm here tonight, asking for permission to increase the signage on the building. Right now, the building looks like this. There's only signage, I don't know if you can see this, but there's only signage facing Route eighty-five, says Automax Service Center. What we're hoping to do is that would be replaced with what we'll say, and you should in your packets have colored copies, I couldn't print this in color, but it'll just basically effectively say Minor Key Service Center on the front of the building. So that's pretty much just a swap, but what's really being asked to be requested, consideration on, is they would like to put additional signage on the side of the building, starting in the front corner and, and going over each bay. There was in the original special permit, a very clear indication from the city of Marlborough that they did not want illumination. The sign company originally put a request in for illuminated signs. There will be no illuminated signs. This request is for signs that will go on the building as the current sign is. The front of the property has a gorgeous oval sign. That, all that will be changed there, and it's why it's not part of this permit, is the face on it. There'll be no change in the sign. So what I'm asking the council to consider today is, would they consider the increase of any signage? And if so, what would be their, their, their liking as to what we would or would not do on this building?
Thank you, Mr. Scuzzelli. Does that complete your presentation?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members speak, or any members of the public speaking in favor? Any members of the public speaking in favor? And again, star six to unmute your phone. Any members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Again, star six to unmute your phone. Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Are there any members of the public speaking in opposition? Again, star six to unmute your phone. Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and that is in Urban Affairs. So, Mr. Scuzzelli, I'm sure the Urban Affairs Committee will be contacting you with a date to come before Urban Affairs.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, that completes all five public hearings. Thank you, councilors, for bearing with us. We all set to continue? Ready to rock? Okay, we'll move on with agenda item number eight.
Communication from the mayor regarding proposed ordinance amendment, chapter sixty-seven Finance, section twenty-six point one, departmental revolving funds, to establish a water and sewer revolving fund and to amend the spending purpose for the Public Safety Revolving Fund.
Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee and to advertise.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee and advertise. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Robie.
Counselor Robie votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Osing.
Counselor Osing votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
eleven yeas. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee and advertise is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number nine.
Communication from the mayor regarding revolving fund spending limits for the Public Safety Revolving Fund, the Parks and Recreation Revolving Fund, the Council on Aging Revolving Fund, and the proposed Water and Sewer Revolving Fund for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll to refer to finance.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Osing.
Counselor Osing votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Robie.
Counselor Robie votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
Motion to refer to finance is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number ten.
Communication from the mayor regarding transfer requests from the Department of Public Works and Auditor totaling two million, four hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-seven cents to fund various accounts for the remainder of fiscal year twenty-one, as outlined in the letters and transfer sheets provided.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counselor Osing.
Counselor Osing votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Robie.
Counselor Robie votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
Motion to refer to the Finance Committee is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number eleven.
Communication from Code Enforcement Officer Ethan Lippett regarding request for approval of two flat wall signs, replacements for the mobile station at six fifty-six Boston Post Road East within the Wayside District.
Madam, Mr. President, Counsel Robie?
Counselor Robie. It works for me, I'm okay.
People that had a madam president.
That's okay.
Sorry. I had planned on referring this to committee, but I did actually get an email from Mr. Falk, who is the attorney for the site, and he did ask if this could be approved this evening. There's a lot going on at this site. These two particular signs are one for the building and one for the car wash, as noted in what the council received. It does meet all of the specifications in the Wayside District. It also complies with a special permit that this site already has. So if there is no objection, I would move to approve these two signs this evening.
Thank you, Counsel Robie. Motion is made and seconded to approve the sign application. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. These are, they're not backlit signs, they're signs that are lit from outside, but I'd like to put, I was going to bring this up in the council, but do an amendment so that outside of business hours, the lights, the signs are turned off. So, how do we do that?
I will ask Counselor Robie for thoughts on that.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this came up with another item that's going to be on the agenda tonight. I am personally not in favor of requiring a owner of a business to turn off their lights. If this was in anywhere else in the city, it would simply be approved by the Building Department as a sign order. We do have some specificity for when we do require signage. We do have some gas station price signs that we do require to be turned off, but for a normal business, a normal operating in the city of Marlborough, their decision to keep their lights on or turn them off at night when they're not open has always been up to the business owner, and I don't see the need to start changing that going forward. So I don't know how, I know we did get language from the solicitor that says we can. I guess there would be a condition added somewhere, but I don't know where it would be added because there's no, unless we amend the actual special permit that goes along with this site to require them, I don't know how else we would do that.
So I'll just, I'll make it a little easier. Counsel Dusset, you're welcome to make a motion and see if there's an appetite for it, if that's what you'd like to do.
That would be fine with me, sir. Motion to amend, amend the special permit to...
It's a, it's a sign permit, right?
Sign permit, yep. Motion to amend the sign permit to require the sign lighting to be turned off outside of business hours.
Has been a motion made to amend the sign permit to turn off the lights after business hours. Is there a second on the motion?
Counsel Orem seconds the motion, the friendly amendment.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President?
Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So there's another order in this, in the Wayside District that this is coming up with well, and this was talked about in the Urban Affairs meeting, and something came up afterwards to kind of articulate what's going on, but basically if, you know, if a business is out, is no long, is turned off, it's no, you know, it's, it's outside of business hours, turning the business, turning the lights off signifies that they're not in operation. So it's also handy for people driving by to know that the business is closed. Also saves energy, reduces light pollution, which are all the other advantages. So that's why I'm, I proposing that tonight and hoping to get some support from the council for it. Thank you.
On the amendment to the sign permit, which again, you're...
I am. Good guy.
Can we ask the folks on teams to mute their phones or, or computers? Thank you. Any, Counsel Navin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Point of clarification I'm hoping for, so... Point of clarification I'm hoping for, so if this goes through, this is just for the mobile station and this would also be for the other business in the Wayside District. This is for no other businesses that are in the city, especially in the Wayside District, but across the city. They do not have these regulations placed on them.
That's, that is my understanding. This is, we're voting just for this location right here.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other discussion? On the motion?
President?
Counselor Orem?
Yeah, no, and we are setting a precedent from this point on. I know we don't require others. This may be something we want to take up in the future. It will help save energy, as well as it will help in respect to, as the Counselor Dusset said, letting people know if the business is open. I support it based on the energy efficiency by itself. Thank you, and the convenience to the customer.
Thank you, Counsel Orem. Is there any other discussion? Just so that you're clear, who's that? I'm sorry, Counsel Wagner, thank you.
I mean, I just want to comment that I support the idea of saving energy and as long as it doesn't create, how, if it's just illuminating the sign, because I am concerned about businesses that may be concerned about security and want some lighting around their building, but it, it feels singling out one business as opposed to passing something that would be applied to all the businesses. It just feels concerning to start with one business, so I just wanted to raise that concern.
Thank you, Counsel Wagner. Counsel Pearlman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo Counsel Wagner's comments. I wonder if the Climate Resiliency Committee could take this up at more of an upstream approach and discuss light pollution and energy efficiency overall, and I think we could set more proactive policies that might be implemented moving forward, and I think that might be a good use of the council's time and something that the committee could work on directly. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Pearlman. Any, Counselor Landers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, quite honestly, I hate to see one section, you know, pointed out that this is the only area that we're gonna do it. I think the other thing we lost track of, that a lighted sign at night, it's, it gives a certain feeling of, I know if the police department, when they do their routes during the night there, if they pull in a parking lot in front of back, by having it lit, I think they can see if there's any, any activity that they don't want to go on there. So, quite honestly, I think singling out one group, but also for the security part of it, I will not support this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Landers. Is there any other discussion? Counsel Dusset?
Thank you very much. I just want to make sure that it's clear, and, you know, I think this would be something as a precedence and maybe start of something to cover and replicate in other areas. But also, this is only the sign for the company itself. It's not necessarily any other lighting associated with the building. So, just want to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the councilors? Just so we're all clear, you're voting on a motion to amend the sign permit to require that the sign be turned off when they're not in business. Everybody good? All right, the motion has been made and seconded. I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the amendment.
Counsel Osing?
Counsel Osing votes no.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landis votes no.
Counsel Dusset?
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes no.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes no.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes no.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes no.
Counsel Tenera?
Counsel Tenera votes no.
Counsel Orem?
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes no.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes no.
Two in favor, nine opposed, sir.
The amendment does not pass with only two in favor and nine opposed. So to Counsel Roby's motion to approve the sign permit, I will ask, any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Osing?
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Dusset?
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Orem?
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Tenera?
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The motion to approve the sign permit is approved by a vote of eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Number Twelve.
Application for a special permit from Attorney Michael Brangwin on behalf of Raising Cane's Restaurant LLC to construct and operate a restaurant with two drive-through service lanes on the site at one...
Mr. President, Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby?
I'm sorry, I think I'm hearing voices, so I thought that he was finished. I move to refer to Urban Affairs to set a public hearing for June 21st and to advertise.
Motion's made and seconded to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee, set a public hearing for June 21st, and to advertise. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Tenera?
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dusset?
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Osing?
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Orem?
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The motion to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee, set a public hearing for June 21st and to advertise is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Thirteen.
Communication from David Balducci regarding a letter of opposition to the application for a special permit of Raising Cane's Restaurant LLC to construct and operate a restaurant with two drive-through service lanes at 141 Boston Post Road West.
Mr. President, Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to accept and place on file and to put Mr. Balducci and anyone else on notice that the public hearing is on June 21st, and they're welcome to come and speak.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the correspondence. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please, to accept and place on file the correspondence.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Dusset?
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Osing?
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Tenera?
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
Motion to accept and place on file the correspondence is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Fourteen.
Communication from Central Mass Mosquito Control Project regarding personnel will be in the community responding to residents' concerns about mosquitoes on various states in June 2021.
Counsel Orem?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. As always, this will be posted, I'm sure, by our clerk's office with the dates of June so far noted, and again, this is, people need to reach out to Central Mass Mosquito Control for issues they may be having at their own property. They can reach them by the phone number posted or at their website. And, Mr. Clerk, I presume you will have this posted on your site?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on files. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Tenera?
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Orem?
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dusset?
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Osing?
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
Motion to accept and place on file the correspondence is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Fifteen.
Minutes, boards, commissions, and committees.
Mr. President?
Counsel Dusset?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the boards, commission, and committees.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dusset?
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Tenera?
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Orem?
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Osing?
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The motion to accept and place on file the minutes is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Reports of committees, and we have a few of them. Who wants to go first? Counselor Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee met on Monday, May 17th, 2021. We had one item on the agenda that evening, Order Number 21-108291, communication from Mayor Vigent together with the proposed FY 2022 municipal operating budget in the amount of $173,983,364. The Finance Committee voting members and other members of the City Council received the mayor's letter dated May 6th, 2021, requesting the approval of the fiscal year 2022 operating budget in the amount of $173,983,364, and discussed various budget adjustments with department managers. The mayor's proposal represents a level funded budget with no increases over the FY 2021 budget. The mayor's letter included the following highlights. Healthcare, health insurance costs continue to rise. The recommended medical plan increased at 5% for EPOs, senior plans 3% for PPOs and 3% for EPOs. The school department operating budget of $66,654,566 represents a zero increase for FY 22. Based on the FY 22 budget figures released by the House Committee on Ways and Means, overall local aid to Marlboro increased by $426,92. Even with a 0% increase in the budget, we need to be cognizant of the increase in taxes in the fall due to the rise of residential values. Anticipated new growth for FY 22 will add an additional $2 million in tax revenue to help stabilize the residential tax rate. Number six was considering the economic impact of COVID-19 on the state revenues. There are no additional capital projects planned other than those sent to the City Council in February to cover infrastructure projects and planned mill and overlay of streets. However, we are borrowing $2 million of the remaining portion of the $5 million 0% interest bond that will authorize four years, that was authorized four years ago for the lead service replacement program. Responding to requests from Counsel Roby, Mayor Vigent advised there should be no reason for a supplemental budget. It was noted that the corrected Page 98 of the FY 2022 budget, rubbish collection and curbside recycling, as well as the FY 2022 principal and interest payments on outstanding long-term debt, aggregate net debt service, will be submitted to the councils for their review. Motion by Counsel Tenera, seconded by the chair, to recommend the approval of the mayor's budget as submitted in the amount of $173,983,364, per roll call, it was, for roll call was in favor of 5-0, and it carried 5-0, meeting adjourned at 8:02 PM. That is the end of my report, Mr. President. I will be asking for a suspension this evening to vote on the FY 22 budget.
There's been a request for the suspension of the rules to vote on the fiscal year 22 budget, so I'll ask the clerk to call the roll for the suspension.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Orem?
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Osing?
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Dusset?
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Tenera?
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The suspension is approved. Counsel Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the proposed FY 2022 municipal operating budget in the amount of $173,983,364.
Motion made and seconded to approve the fiscal year 22 budget of $173,983,364. Discussion on the motion?
Mr. President?
Counsel Pearlman?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank Counsel Irish for facilitating the Finance Committee meeting, having gone through the first full finance meeting for the budget was very informative and very helpful. I did want to put forth a piece of feedback on the process moving forward. I felt like it would be more effective, and I know some other communities have done it this way, to facilitate the process by department, to allow for more qualitative and efficient process, since I know it was hard to follow as a counselor, and I imagine the public might have had difficulty following the dialogue moving back and forth between the councilors. So moving forward, I would recommend that we have a more structured meeting to allow for department heads to answer questions uniformly and make sure that we use their time effectively. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Pearlman. Any other discussions? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the fiscal year 22 budget approval.
Counsel Osing?
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Tenera?
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Landis.
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
I'm yeah, sir.
The motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-two budget is approved, eleven in favor and unopposed. Reports of committees continue.
Mr. President.
Counsel Tenera.
Thank you, Mr. President. On May eighteenth, we took up, in LNL, we took up order number two-one dash one hundred eight two-two-one, proposed city code amended, chapter two-seventy, building and site development. S, what does S stand for?
Section.
Section, thank you. Section nineteen fences in addition to section twenty-four easements and right-of-way, submitted by Counsel Dusset. So, motion by, well, we had Ethan Lippert here, we had Tom DePersio, the solicitor, and Pam, so I want to thank them all for chiming in, and we had a few counselors join us as well, so we thank them as well for their input. So we had a riveting discussion on fences, and this is what we came up with. Motion by Counsel Landis to recommend the approval of the proposed amendment to the city code regarding fences as amended by Solicitor Grossfeld and City Engineer, seconded by the Chair, roll call vote was two in favor, one opposed. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Tenera.
All right.
Counsel Landis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Service Committee meeting met on May eighteenth. We brought up, took up three items that night. The first item was order number twenty-one, one zero zero eight two nine five, application renewal of a junk dealer license for Best Buy Donald Lynch Boulevard. And a motion made by Counsel Irish, seconded by the Chair, to recommend the approval of the license subject to the Corby approval by the police. And that voted three-zero. The second item we brought, took up, order number twenty-one, one zero zero eight two nine six, application for renewal of a junk dealer, secondhand dealer's license to Echo ATM Salmons Paul Mall. And the chief reviewed the Corby report on the individual that runs it, and it was approved. Just for the people at home and some of the new counselors, that's kind of a unique unit out there at the mall. If you want to get rid of your old cell phone, you basically enter certain information. It reads the information, it gets the serial number and everything off the cell phone, and it'll give you some money for your phone, so it kind of works out pretty well. I think Mr. Majakman, I think, mentioned, I think they gave out about ten thousand dollars again this year, so it's kind of a service that we allow them to do because it's good for the people. It's probably the best way to get rid of your phone. Okay, the third item we took up that night on the eighteenth, order number two-one, one zero zero eight two three zero. And this is a proposed amendment to the city code, chapter five, ten sewers. And this was submitted by the mayor. And it was, I think it was a great meeting. We had the mayor present what his feeling was about looking at how we handle the sewer charges, but it's the connecting of the sewers or the houses to the sewer system that we spent millions of dollars on. And it worked out well because the mayor gave his presentation, the Commissioner of Public Works talked, the City Engineer talked, the President of the Council talked, and, you know, we went on for a good hour because this is a big thing. And the bottom line is, what we're saying here, counselors and people out there listening, that, you know, we spent this money, it's needed. And I myself, I supported this, I don't know, five million dollars, whatever it was, a few years ago, because someday septic systems are going to run out. And here's a section of town that, you know, didn't have city sewage. So we spent the money, put them in, and of course, as we learned talking to the engineer and other people, it's not just the piping, but it's the pumping stations, you know? So it's something we're doing to that section of the town. But somehow we have to encourage, you know, people to hook up. It does cost money, but also if your septic system goes on you, you know, it costs money to get that fixed. So basically, what this ordinance will do is that we will require, when people are transferring property or selling their property, that they have to, they have to hook up to the city system. All right? Now, ordinarily, I thought we'd move on this tonight, but I think it's best that we bring it back to Public Service Committee, you know, one more time, address a couple areas that we might look at. So I have a feeling that the next meeting, I will give you an additional report and update, but then get moving on this. So, Mr. President, I'm not asking for an advertisement tonight, I'm not asking for any movement on this. I just want to report that more is coming, and I think without a doubt we want to get moving on that.
Yes, so your report indicates that the committee approved it three-nothing.
Yeah.
And then you'll sit on the table for the next two weeks in the council, and then if there's something changes, you'll let us know in two.
That's correct. Okay, it's a big item. We spend a lot of time, and we want to get it right. So, if there's no questions, I will finish on my report. Counsel Dusset. Yes, Counsel Dusset.
This is reports of committees, so if you're done with your reports.
I'm done, I'm done with my report.
We'll keep moving on reports of committees.
Yes, okay.
Mr. President, I do have a point of order, if you don't mind.
I'll listen to the port of order and see if I'll entertain it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Um, I just wasn't clear whether or not this is going back to public service or not.
Right now, all that's been done is reported out of committee.
Yeah.
It's now in the hands of the council.
Right.
So stay on the agenda. It still needs to be advertised. Proper format from the solicitor, and all that will take place two weeks from now. So if there's changes you want to make, talk to the Chair or talk to the solicitor.
I thought he thought it was going to go back to public service, that's what caught me off guard.
Yeah, no, I think that was just spoken in error. It's right now, it's in the hands of the council. Well, assuming we get through the meeting, it'll be in the hands of the council.
Okay, that was the point of order, but thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the City Council Urban Affairs Committee met on Tuesday, May eleventh. We had a few items on our agenda. The first one was order number twenty-one, one hundred eight two one four, which was an application for a special permit from Calverti Naturals LLC to operate an adult-use marijuana retail establishment at three-two thirty-nine Boston Post Road West. We did go through the draft decision on the special permit. It was agreed that number eight, the solicitor would come up with language to remove reference to a rule that is, was listed in error and add language specific to documents we have received. We also took up number nine, which had another reference to a rule that seemed to be a wrong place, so he would look into that. We added in condition number eight, we didn't add, actually, we changed the hours so that it will be Monday through Saturday, nine AM to ten PM, and Sunday from ten AM to eight PM, and added a new condition that would replicate the police detail language from previous special permits for recreational marijuana establishments, and a new condition that the applicant must be open for business within three years of receiving final approval for the special permit. Counsel Dusset moved to recommend the approval for the special permit as amended. Roll call vote was, five members voted in favor. I am asking for a suspension this evening so that this can be referred to the solicitor to be put in proper form for our next meeting. We also started discussion on order number twenty-one, one hundred eight two one six, which is the proposed zoning map amendment to results way mixed-use overlay district and proposed revisions to chapter six fifty, section thirty-three of the zoning code. We are continuing that discussion tomorrow evening when Urban Affairs meets at seven o'clock. And the final item on the agenda was order number twenty-one hundred seven nine nine five B, which was a special permit application for Wayside Residential, three thirty-nine Boston Post Road East, and that was not taken up at all as we had voted in committee to give them an extension. So I am asking for the suspension, and.
Okay, no, I'll ask, Counsel Roby is asking for suspension of the rules to send the item to the solicitors. We'll take up the suspension. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the suspension.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Landis.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
I'm yeah, sir.
Suspension is approved, eleven-zero. Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. So move to refer this to Legal Department to be put in proper form for our next meeting.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Legal Department to put in proper format for our next meetings. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Landis.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
And Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
I'm yeah, sir.
The motion to refer the item to the solicitor put in proper legal format is approved, eleven in favor and unopposed. Are there any other reports of committees? Hearing none, agenda item sixteen.
Order number twenty-one dash one hundred eight two six nine, the appointment of Tin Hui as public, excuse me, as Building Commissioner for a three-year term from date of confirmation. The recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the new Building Commissioner. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Landis.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
I'm yeah, sir.
The motion to approve the new Building Commissioner is approved, eleven in favor and unopposed. Agenda item seventeen.
Order number twenty-one dash one hundred eight two seven two, the reappointments to the Conservation Commission of Edward Clancy for a term to expire April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, and Dennis Demers and David Williams for two-year terms who expire in April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. The recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve the appointments with three-year terms for each to expire in April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the recommendation of the Personnel Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Landis.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
I'm yeah, sir.
The motion to approve the three members of the Conservation Commission is approved, eleven in favor and unopposed. Agenda item eighteen.
Order number twenty-one dash one hundred eight two five eight A, petition for Massachusetts Electric in Verizon, New England, to install a new pole number five in Anchor, which will allow for the removal of the pole and tree guy wire at forty-three Berlin Road. Recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve.
Counsel Landis.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Landis.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Excuse me. Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Eleven yeah, sir.
The motion to approve the pole at forty-three Berlin Road is approved, eleven in favor and unopposed. Agenda item nineteen.
Order number twenty-one dash one hundred eight two five nine, application for renewal of junk dealer secondhand dealer license for Antoine Batar, DBA Hanush Jewelers at six oh one Donald Lynch Boulevard. Recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve. Counsel Landis.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Landis.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Yeah, sir.
The Hanush Jewelers Junk Dealer License is approved, eleven in favor and unopposed. Agenda item number twenty.
Order number twenty-one dash one hundred eight two seven eight, the application for renewal of a junk dealer secondhand dealer license for TVI Inc., DBA Savers, at two twenty-two A East Main Street. And the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve with the conditions and waivers.
Counsel Landis.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the junk dealer license for Savers. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Landis.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
I'm yeah, sir.
The junk dealer license for Savers is approved, eleven in favor and unopposed. Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be recusing myself from item number twenty-one.
Ask the clerk to please let the record reflect that Counsel Dumas will not be participating in agenda item number twenty-one. Agenda item twenty-one.
Order number twenty-one dash one hundred eight two seven nine, the application for renewal of junk dealer secondhand dealer license, Gerald Dumas, DBA Dumas and Sons Secondhand Store, sixty-five Mechanic Street. Recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve.
Counsel Landis.
Uh, thank you again, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Landis.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Dumas abstains. Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Ten in favor, one abstention, sir.
On the motion to approve the Dumas and Sons Junk Dealer License, it is approved, ten in favor with one abstention. Agenda item number twenty-two.
Order number twenty-one dash one hundred eight two eight zero, the application for renewal of a junk dealer secondhand dealer license for Roman Kim Yargarov, DBA Arthur and Sons Shoe Repair, one oh seven Main Street. Recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve.
Counsel Landis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve Arthur and Sons Junk Dealer License. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Landis.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
I'm yeah, sir.
The motion to approve Arthur and Sons Junk Dealer License is approved, eleven in favor and unopposed. Agenda item twenty-three.
Order number twenty-one dash one hundred eight two 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 A, that the city solicitor be invited to a future Urban Affairs meeting to provide general information regarding the approval and denial of special permit applications that may be referred to the committee. And the recommendation of the Urban Affairs Committee is to accept and place on file.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee which is to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to move the recommendation of the committee which is to accept and place on file. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Landis.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
I'm yeah, sir.